Good morning. I call to order the January 21st, 2020, meeting for the Saline County Board of Commissioners. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Shadwick?
Here.
Commissioner Sparks?
Here.
Commissioner Vidrickson?
Here.
Commissioner Weiss?
Here.
I ask that you please stand and join me in a flag salute followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We now move to the public forum portion of our business where citizens may speak on county government, usually limited to three minutes and pertaining to items that are not on today's agenda. Does anyone wish to address the commission? Please state your name and address, please.
Alan Lindholm, 3647 South Lightville Road, Salina, Kansas. I have been coming to commission meetings for probably ten years and to get something done on our vote, on our road. And I see finally on the agenda today, we're going to be voting for the funds to be allocated to the fixing of our road from Burma Road to Lightville.
Okay, Alan. It's on today's agenda, so we will, we will take the public comment on that at that time.
Okay.
Amen.
Okay. Amen.
Anyone else wish to address the commission? Seeing none, I'll bring it back for regular business. Are there, on the consent agenda, are there any items that wish to be removed by any of the commissioners? Hearing none, we'll approve the consent agenda. Item number one.
RFA number 109-20, Tech Fund 2020 Flyover, Rebecca Seaman, Register of Deeds.
Good morning, Rebecca.
Good morning.
Good morning.
You're starting your day off. I have a request for action to transfer $30,000 to the Register of Deeds Technology Fund. Hello? And the, kind of a backup for some of the people might be new to this, in 2004, we, the legislature gave the Register of Deeds a technology fund for $2 per page. And occasionally, I have given a little over $400,000 towards that fund. There is a committee that meets occasionally to, if somebody has a request for a land records purpose that involves technology, they can request the commission for that, but they go through this committee just to make sure it's following the law and kind of the rules. So, that's kind of a little brief background on, on this tech fund. And so, we did set up a special fund just for that, for the commissioners to oversee. So, right now, I have $152,000 in there. If you approve this action, the $30,000 from the Register of Deeds Technology Fund, that will give available $79,000 in that fund. In talking to G.I.S., they're continuing the 2020 flyover. And so, I had told her that I would make sure that that money was in there for that purpose if the commission desires. So, that's kind of where this is coming from. And then, I will continue to put some money in towards that up until 2022. Any questions?
Well, we haven't gotten to the budget impact part of it. Let's see.
It'll be all good. So, I'm required to keep $50,000 into my technology fund, and right now, I have $152,000 in there. So, it reduced mine some, and it increased the land records technology fund to $79,000.
So, it's simply a transfer of funds from one, from one budget line item to another? Is that correct?
Correct.
And as far as the flyover goes, I guess, I mean, I thought that was a G.I.S. program, but why, why is deeds involved in that, too?
That is where the money comes from. It can't come out of the Register of Deeds Technology Fund. It has to go into the land records technology fund that the county commission controls. And if they choose not to use it for the flyover, that's up to you guys, but that is what I had agreed with G.I.S., that that would be a good purpose.
I think that we had, had previously talked about this, and we were in unison and saying that we were in favor of being able to continue that program. So, I'll yield to other commissioners for questions or comments.
None.
Great program, and I'm sure that all the departments really thank you for transferring those monies to make that flyover available to help fund that. So, thank you.
A lot of what I have funded has gone towards G.I.S. and planning and zoning.
Appreciate the contribution.
Sure.
Do you have something, Jim?
No, I believe we're in the second year of the G.I.S., that's a two-year program, correct?
I believe so.
And this will be the second year of it.
Right.
So, this will be the funding that we approved last year.
Right.
With an RFA involved, is there any public comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the transfer of $30,000 from the Register of Deeds Tech Fund to the Land Records Tech Fund as submitted by staff.
Second the motion. It's been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 109-20, Tech Fund 2020 Flyover Funds. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign, the motion does carry. Item number two.
Register of Deeds Annual Update, Rebecca Seaman, Register of Deeds.
Good morning again, Rebecca.
Good morning. I, annually, I kind of give a review of numbers from the past year. So, in 2019, I had sent you a little more detailed email that had Excel spreadsheet, but it's a little more complicated. This is a little more direct. The legislature in 2014 approved where they were gradually going to eliminate the mortgage registration fee. Last year was the first year that we had zero. So, and the recording fees will not increase any further. So, they are at where they're going to stay. So, these are going to reflect that. Recording fees, we brought in $386,000. Our services were, the way we're up, we had 1381 passports, which is an increase from all previous years. And the mortgage registration, the indebtedness, pretty much blew us out of the water for Saline County. We've had a record indebtedness of $857,676,260 in Saline County for last year. Unfortunately for us, we can't collect on any of that. Usually, I would say we had maybe two or three mortgages for a million or more. Last year, we had 40. So, I mean, it's good for the community, that shows that it's growing. So, but these fees or these numbers reflect all of that. We collected $57,566 in our tech fund, and then I show the clerk and treasurer fund. Heritage Trust Fund is $28,783. That goes directly to the state. Anything over $30,000 goes into County General. We've not reached that target yet, though. Some of my expenditures with $46,107 out of the technology fund has gone for film, we've got a new server, all the Windows upgrade to get us ready for 2020. I pay for my own hardware, software, maintenance, leaving us a balance of $152,686. And then, I just, I spell out how many deeds and mortgages and discharges that we've brought in. We've archived $29,441. These are pretty average numbers. Have any questions?
Well, I'd like to make, I'd like to make a comment. Number one, I assume it's a topographical error, but you've got this statement dated January the 9th of 2019. I assume that need to be corrected to be 2020?
Yeah, I hadn't caught on yet.
Okay, if you'd do that for us, I think we'd, in case a paper trail is ever needed. Other questions or comments from commissioners? Seeing none, thank you.
Good report.
Thank you.
Yep.
We'll move to item number three.
RFA number 113-20, Dell Desktop PCs 2020, Brad Bowers, Community Techno, Computer Technology Director.
Good morning, Brad.
Good morning. Saline County IT is requesting permission to expend $19,78520 for Dell desktop computers. We, Saline County budgeted $24,000 for this project in the 2020 Technology Improvement Budget. Our plan is to purchase these desktops through the State of Kansas contract in place with Dell Government. Dell Government was the low bid, was the low quote in this, in this purchase. They quoted $494.63 per unit. CDWG quoted $510 per unit, and PCMG quoted $549 per unit. IT recommends that we move forward with this purchase. These desktop computers will be used in every department within the county. We will use the computers to turn over our inventory, and they will be used to replace our oldest PCs that are out there. In addition, they will also help us get across the finish line on our Windows 10 update. We, we will leave about $4,214 in that line item, and we plan to use that to purchase any monitors that go bad in that, in that time period. We recommend we move forward with the purchase.
Okay. Questions from commissioners?
And I, and I do believe that you'll need other softwares coming down the road to add to this, but that's in a different timeframe coming down the road?
We, we will have some Microsoft, primarily Microsoft Office licenses that, that will, that we'll purchase this year through the budget process as well. Yes.
From a separate budget line item?
Yes, sir. Yep, that's correct.
Other questions? Any public comment? Okay, I will ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the purchase of Dell computers as listed in RFA 113-20.
Second the motion. It's been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 113-20, Dell Desktop PCs for 2020. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Brad.
Thank you.
Item number four.
Pretrial Stats Update, Andrew Pellet, Pretrial Coordinator, Community Corrections.
Morning, Andrew.
Good morning. All right, so the stats update for the pretrial program is going to be for the month of December. There were 27 placements on pretrial services in the month of December. After a meeting with the district court judges recently and reviewing our program, it was decided a defendant placed in the pretrial program will only be considered active if they are released from jail. This does not affect the jail days saved. What we were dealing with is we had defendants we would screen on some of our high-risk levels that were still had a cashierity bond, so they would stay in custody unless they were able to post the bond. And they weren't available for resources or supervision because they're still in custody at the jail. And so, sometimes they would, the entirety of their case would be in jail, and they would never be out. They'd be sentenced, and they never came out on pretrial. So, the only small change we made is we don't consider those active in pretrial unless they bond out. So, if they bond out prior to the disposition of their case, then they're active on pretrial, they're available for resources, and the supervision conditions that we have for people on pretrial program. As of December 31st, 120 clients are actively being supervised in the pretrial program. 21 are in custody. 119 have had their charges dismissed or have been sentenced, and 70 have had their pretrial bond revoked. As you see that 21 in custody, if, I can remember a couple months ago, that was, you know, 40 and 45 in custody. And that's when we went back and revisited that and decided that the ones that we're going to consider active in pretrial are only if they get out of jail. So, that's why you kind of see that number starting to drop now. Of the 70 who have had their pretrial bond revoked so far, eight were because of alleged new charges. 62 were due to failure to appear in court. The 330 placements on pretrial supervision through December 31st have impacted Saline County Jail by 19,044 days. December accounted for 3,366 of those days. No update on the new IT system regarding client notification. We, all individually with Community Corrections, met with Bob Stevenson, regular juvenile probation, drug court, pretrial, and we all talked about some of the things we need with the, the program that we're, or the IT system that we want. And of course, pretrial's big concern still is that it's a secure, and that we, we're mostly on the client notification, court reminders, treatment reminders, things like that. So, there's no, no update on that at this point. Number six, program tool validation update. Alex Holzener, who worked on the pretrial program in Johnson County, we've been working with him on trying to get ourselves in position to get validated as a program. As part of that validation, he had suggested that we come up with a scoring guide when completing the pretrial risk assessment. So, when we do the risk assessments, depending on the circumstances of the case, they score out on the, on the risk assessment tool. And so, by having a scoring guide, it ensures that we're, we're consistent and accurate whenever we're scoring these with regards to the circumstances of the arrests. And so, we're going to work with Johnson County. I'm going to email them, have them send me over a copy of their scoring guide, and we're just going to, Marilyn and I are going to sit down and, you know, implement that into our program, just so we can continue to, to update our program and make sure that we're in compliance with best practices and pretrial validation. And that's all I got for today.
Well, it continues to amaze me, and, and we're criticized from people in the community about how the jail's being run. People that are in jail shouldn't be picked up for failure to appear and so forth. 62 people have been in jail, were able to leave jail because of this pretrial bond, and then they failed to appear. All they have to do to stay out of jail is show up for their court date, presumably.
That's correct.
They would be able to, you know, take care of their situation at that time, and they choose not to appear.
And there's a portion that, that do choose not to appear for various reasons. That's why we're, our big moving forward still is the IT portion of this, because believe it or not, that there are some who just fail to appear because they get their court dates mixed up. So, we're still big on the communication. So, right now, Marilyn and I are still contacting them personally on phone and just trying to give reminders that way. That's why the big IT piece, as we move forward, hopefully, we're going to see that percentage, even from that failed to appear, continue to drop. Now, there's always going to be the small portion of defendants who just don't want to go to court for various reasons. But we can still, we can still try to affect the ones that maybe just made a mistake with court dates and times, didn't have a ride. We're working on some of those factors, and hopefully, we can, once we get the IT system up and going, we can even, you know, make that number drop further.
Further comments or questions, Mr. Pellet, from the commissioners? Not, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
We'll move to item number five.
RFA number 110-20, 2020 Family Spending Amendment Letter, Jason Tiller, Health Department Director.
Morning, Jason.
Good morning, commissioners. For the first time today, KDHE Family Planning Program has provided us additional grant funds for this grant cycle in the amount of $8,583, which will revise the grant total for this year to $40,408. We can either accept the funds or not accept them. We recommend that the chair please sign the letter that would accept these funds. These additional funds will be used to help offset some of the staff salaries that aren't currently grant-covered within the family planning, planning program, so it'll have a small but helpful positive impact to our budget.
Sounds good to me. Questions from commissioners or public comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve by signature the additional KDHE Family Planning Program funds.
Second. Been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 110-20 for the 2020 Family Spending Amendment Letter. Any additional comments? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We'll move to item number six.
RFA number 111-20, Kansas Health Information Network Agreement, Jason Tiller, Health Department Director.
Hello again, Jason.
Hello again. So, we are seeking membership with the Kansas Health Information Network. This membership, under option one, has no cost to us or the county, and allows for a secure sharing of information amongst our disease investigation staff with local hospitals and other Medicare, medical facilities. There are already multiple healthcare providers in Salina that are currently part of this network. Alternatives for action are to either let us become a member of KHIN, do not allow, or send us back for more information. We are recommending that the board of county commissioners approve and sign the participation agreement to allow us to become a member. And like I've stated earlier, there's no impact to the budget since there is no cost for us to be a part of this program.
The way I see it is you're the professional in this situation, and if that's your recommendation, I'm going to go along with it. So, are there any other questions or comments from commissioners?
Yes, Jason, I, back on page 14 there, where it has membership options and stuff, is, is those figures there, those charges to implement this, the pricing schedule there, will, at a later date, if you do get accepted into this to run the program, it looks to me like you have to have certain software and hardware to be able to do this?
No, for what we will be using it for with our disease investigation staff would just be the provider portal in that option one. We're not going to go into the different registries that they have down there. We have no plans to move forward into those types of registries at this time.
Okay. I just wanted to ask that because I'm thinking.
Very good question.
Further questions or comments? Public comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve by signature the membership of the Health Department with the KHIN as requested by staff.
Second. Been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 111-20, Kansas Health Information Network Agreement. Further comments or questions? If not, all those in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Jason. Item number seven.
RFA number 112-20, Opioid Data to Action Grant, Jason Tiller, Health Department Director.
You're the star again, Jason.
Hey, try and get it all in one day and get it out of the way.
There we go.
So, we have been selected by KDHE as one of the overdose data to action program recipients. The purpose of this agreement is to work with, with KDHE and implement local prevention strategies and activities to help build capacity around opioids and drug overdose as well, with the overall goal of preventing death and additional harm from that. This is a three-year grant project period. This agreement will be for the first grant year, for the first project year, and the award is for $23,721.16. This first year, we'll be conducting a series of assessments around drug use in the, in the area, and with opioid use, working with first responders, Central Kansas Foundation, hospitals, and several other partners. And then, years two and three, we'll be focused on some action steps or activities based off of whatever we learned from our assessment year, this, this first year. So, alternatives is to either accept the funds and let us begin the project, do not accept the funds, or send us back for more information. We recommend that the chair approve and accept the funding in the amount of $23,721.16, and that the board chair, along with myself, sign the agreement. KDHE requires two copies, original copies of the agreement, as they will have original signatures on theirs, and then send us a copy back with both original signatures as well. Budget impact, this is additional revenue that was not generally planned for in our 2020 budget. However, it will help support the health educator position.
The money, does it come directly from the KDHE? Is that where those funds come from?
So, it's coming from CDC to KDHE, and then, we are further the subrecipient, and then we will receive our money from KDHE.
Is this a misprint, or, or, item number six was, these are 111-20, both of them are the same RFA number? Should that be the case or not?
That's 112.
Oh, it's 112, I'm sorry. I was looking at the other one. My mistake. Any other questions or comments from commissioners?
Jason, is this a brand-new grant program?
It is, sir. KDHE had a opioid grant program, I think it was late 2018, or maybe early 2019, and this one is focused on, and we weren't, we didn't receive any funds at that time, and this one is focused on the prevention side of it.
Well, it seems like anybody, anything we can do to help the opioid research is, we need to be doing it. So, I would, I would say that we would accept it, so, go ahead.
Jason, just a quick question here, is, is with this here, is there, do you see any help there for this intervention with the Saline Sheriff and central other places to help with the opioid and the drug addiction and stuff with this?
When you say intervention, you mean as in?
I mean, if you're, if you're looking at its prevention, and, you know, if somebody does get arrested, I mean, do you, will the sheriff department be able to utilize you guys to help somebody that is in that case to help down the road?
Well, our role in this will be to help conduct those assessments, and basically be the convener, trying to pull this information and people together to figure out where we, as a community, need to move forward on this. I don't think it's probably the place for us to supplant what, like, Central Kansas Foundation and the hospital is doing to treat overdose, but we certainly can have a role in that prevention aspect.
Okay. Is there certain paperwork and stuff, trails, that have to be followed by your place here to, to get these funds supported?
Right. We do have a work plan that outlines the activities that we will be doing over the next year, and then we will continue to update that work plan with what we've accomplished. Any type of barriers that we might run into is something on that work plan. And then, for year two and three, we'll have to draft new work plans for each of those years, based off of what we've learned this year, and then what we're going to try and accomplish in those next years.
Okay. Thank you. Questions or comments from commissioners? Any public comment? Bring it back to the commission for action.
Mr. Chair, I move we accept the grant as presented by staff.
Second the motion. It's been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 112-20, Opioid Data to Action Grant. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you, Jason. We'll move to item number eight.
RFA number 120-20, Compliance One, Federal Motor Carrier Safety Association Clearing House Amendment Agreement, Marilyn Lambert, House Human Resources Director.
Good morning, Marilyn.
Good morning, Mrs. Lamber. Now, this request for action is to contract with Mary Lynn for the carrier customers beginning January 6th.
Evidently, your microphone's not on there.
This request is for the Clearing House regulations that went into effect January 6th, 2020. This is a secure online database that will give employers and authorized users information about CDL holders. This is a mandate, something that we are going to be required to do when we have current CDL holders. We will have to do an annual search on this to see if there's been any drug and alcohol violations. And then, as for applicants, what we'll have to do is searches to see if the, the candidate that we are considering has any drug and alcohol violations. This is a new program that's going into effect. We currently contract with Compliance One on our drug and alcohol testing for CDL holders. We also contract with Compliance One with our employee assistance program. So, this would be an additional service that we are requesting be allowed. Compliance One would assist us with these searches. It's hoped that after a period of time, that we will be able to bring that back and do that in-house to avoid that extra expense. Alternatives for action are to approve, or deny, or delay consideration for further information. Two departments will be affected by this. It would be Roden Bridge and Expo Center, weed, because they're the two departments that have the CDL drivers. So, we're estimating about $450. So, we're estimating about $450 that are going to be for the pre-employment searches and then also the annual searches. Do think that this can be absorbed by those departments, and then, again, hopefully reduced at a later date where we can come back and do it in-house.
Marilyn, are we required, I know that truck lines and so forth, the people that have the CDL people, are we required to random, random test, you know?
Yes.
We do have that?
Yes.
Policy, or is required to do so?
Yes.
Okay. I don't, I don't see anything why we would not do this, but I'll let other commissioners and comment or questions. Are there any public comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the Commission for Action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve by signature the agreement as presented.
Second motion.
Been moved in second that we approve, RFA 120-20, Compliance One, FMCSA Clearing House Agreement. Further questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. The motion carries. We'll move to item number nine.
Human Resources Update. Marilyn Lamer, Human Resources Director.
Good morning again, Marilyn.
Good morning again. Workers' compensation, we had four events in this last reporting period. Under benefits and insurance, based on our favorable plan performance, we were able to do a premium holiday in the month of December 2019, and so what that means, it gives both employer and employee relief for that particular month. We did not have to put any money into our trust fund to fund our health and dental plan. With just three months into our current plan year, our performance is off to a good start. The medical is running at about a 70% ratio of expense to funding, so being below 100 is our goal. Our dental is running just a little bit higher at 96%, but overall, we are doing very well. No policy or procedure updates at this time, but due to this new agreement that you did just approve, we'll need to do a slight revision to that policy to put some verbiage into it for the testing. Under miscellaneous, United Way Campaign, we did in December, we had $4,563 in contributions, and it was about a 4% increase over last year. Under employment updates, we have four new hires, 10 that are, that transferred or promoted, 12 that are no longer employed, and currently recruiting for three positions. However, on the vehicle registration technician, we did extend a job offer and it was accepted, so corrections officer and attorney is what we're recruiting for right now. Upcoming events is hopefully to fill the vacancies. Also, working on preparing documents for a K-Work work comp audit that happens every year at this time. Also, the building authorities work comp audit, we're preparing some documents for that. We've got a blood drive in February. We are also preparing documents for the county's financial audit, and then eventually we'll be working on 2021 personnel benefits projections.
Okay. Questions or comments from commissioners? Hearing none. Thank you, Marilyn, for that report.
Thank you.
We'll move to item number 10.
RFA number 118-20, Salina Tech CDL Training Agreement. Darren Fischel, Roden Bridge Administrator.
Good morning, Darren.
This is an RFA. We, new regulations are requiring all new CDL commercial drivers licensed.
I guess your microphone's not on either, Darren. I don't know how we got by all the others with.
New regulations are requiring all new CDL commercial drivers licensed drivers to have completed an entry-level driver's training course certified by the FMCSA, the Federal Motor Carrier Safety Administration, before licensure. Salina Tech will be an approved trainer and can partner with us to provide the mandatory theory training. Training can be provided through an online curriculum adjusted to any timeframe that works for us. Once the theory is completed, students can then begin behind-the-wheel training. Salina Tech will certify a few of our employees as CDL trainers so that we can continue to train employees on our own equipment. Upon successful completion of both portions, Salina Tech will issue a certificate enabling the employee to report to the Department of Motor Vehicles for skill tests and licenses. This request is to enter into an agreement with Salina Tech to provide the required entry-level driver's training course. The fees will be $500 for entry-level driver's training and another $125 for the required electronic book. If approved, we recommend an agreement for the trainee, that if they leave employment within 12-month period of getting their CDL, they will reimburse Saline County for the Salina Tech fees. The alternatives for actions are to approve the request, enter into an agreement with Salina Tech, two, deny the request, or three, delay consideration for further information. Staff is recommending that you approve the request. The budget impact, we feel, will be minimal. When we have vacancies, the vacancy dollars can be utilized for these fees, and this opens up our applicant pool to consider those without a CDL when we do have a vacancy.
I'm a little confused by it all. I mean, not confused, but perplexed that the fee is $500, and you would, I would assume that someone that is applying for a truck driver job at the, at the county of dump truck driver would already know how to drive a dump truck, so to speak. I know there are DOT laws that they have to go through, but that just seems like it's, it takes a lot to get it done.
This is so we can open up our applicant pool to fill that truck driver trainee position, because sometimes we do not get any applicants for CDL drivers because of the pay, but if we can offer, and we've done this with a few employees, but the federal regulations are changing. You can't just get, go take the test and use a truck and go get the license anymore. You're going to have to have a certain amount of curriculum hours that are certified and the behind-the-wheel training that's certified, and Salina Tech simply provides this certified instructor base to allow that.
And those laws have, are going into effect, or have been in effect for a?
Those laws are going into effect in 2022. That was only after delay. Initially, they were to go into effect February 9th, 2020.
Wow, this is, this is, I think this is going to be a game changer, myself, for, for the trucking industry in the United States, but the laws are the laws.
It is a $3,500 course. If you are to contact Salina Tech individually and to go take it there, it's a, that's their cost to do it there.
And this $500 fee will be a county cost?
Yes.
We will, to be reimbursed if the, if the person doesn't work out or doesn't stay with the job or whatever?
Correct. It's typical to what the Sheriff's Office does with employees coming to work here, requiring training, that if they do not complete so much time work here, they would reimburse the county.
Okay. I'm shaking my head, I guess. Comments from commissioners?
You will be providing the instructors?
We will be, Salina Tech will vet our current employees that meet the requirement for them to be an instructor, I believe, which is two to three years of CDL experience. And these new laws not only affect people that don't have a CDL, it will affect people that have a Class B and are wanting to get a Class A. After, after this date, you will have to have this, this classroom training.
Wow, okay. Further questions or comments?
Last year, last year or the year before, what, what did we implement to help get CDL drivers?
We, we implemented the CDL trainee position.
That's what, okay.
At that point, it was when we could, they could go take the test, and then we provided the truck for them and things like that, and we've had a couple of people do that.
But this, that is pretty much?
Yeah, that would go out the window then, because without the certification from Salina Tech, we will, we would lack that ability.
Okay.
Not the ability, but the paperwork.
What is the fee for the, for the test itself with the, with the state?
You know, I think it's somewhere around $40 or $60, depending upon what you're getting, air brakes, tanker, hazmat, and things like that.
And is that on the individual to pay that portion, or is the county picking up the?
We have typically reimbursed them upon successful completion, and that's also my policy. We have in policy where?
Tuition.
Tuition reimbursement.
Right. Okay. Great. Any other comments or questions? Questions from the public? If not, I'll bring it back to the Commission for Action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve by signature the Salina Tech CDL Training Agreement as requested by staff.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we approve, RFA 118-20, Salina Tech CDL Training Agreement. Is there any further comments? All those in favor of the motions, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. The motion carries. Thank you, Darren. Thank you, Marilyn. And we'll move to item number 11.
RFA number 119-20, bid award for single axle dump truck. Darren Fischel, Roden Bridge Administrator.
Hello again, Darren.
I'll say Mary Chief this, this time. This is to award the contractor purchase of one 2020 single axle dump truck. Sealed bids were opened on January 9th, 2020 at 4:00 PM at the City-County Building. Bids were received from three local truck dealers, and are as follows. Truck Center of Salina, Kansas bid a 2020 Freightliner M2 106 with a body by Bede for MHC Kenworth of Salina, Kansas bid a 2020 Kenworth T370 with a body by Hillbill for $78,100. MHC Kenworth from Salina, Kansas also bid a 2020 Kenworth T370 with a body by OX for $78,560. Summit Truck Group bid three trucks, a 2020 International MV607 bodied by Naphide for $88,352. A 2020 International MV607 bodied by Henderson for $86,911. A 2020 International MV607 bodied by Warren for $84,519. Alternatives for action would be to approve the low bid and award the bid to MHC Kenworth Salina, Kansas for the 2020 single axle dump truck with a dump body by Hillbill for the amount of $78,100. B would be to reject the bids and rebid. The staff recommends to approve the low bid and award the bid to MHC Kenworth Salina, Kansas for the 2020 single axle dump truck with a dump body by Hillbill for the amount of $78,100. This truck replaces a Ford 1987 dump truck that was purchased from Purple Wave Auctions for $9,500 in 2017. This truck is used to haul the mini excavator, skid steer loader, and various other equipment and materials to the work sites safely. The 1987 Ford truck was purchased as a stopgap measure to allow the Roden Bridge Department time to schedule and budget a replacement. This is a planned purchase from the Roden Bridge Seven-Year EI Equipment Improvement Program adopted by the Board of County Commissioners in 2019. Our budget impact is we currently have an unencumbered balance of $259,923. With the price of the dump truck, which is $78,100, that leaves us a remaining balance of $181,823.
Darren, on the, on the bid specs, and I'll just use MHC, the, two different suppliers for a, for a dump body, is that correct? I mean, two different manufacturers, is that, is that the Hillbill and the OX?
Yes, yes.
And, and they both meet specifications type thing?
They do.
Same with the Summit Group, that they, they just provided three different dump bodies?
Yes, yes, same truck, just different dumps, dump beds.
Just, just as a guess off the top of your hat, what is a dual axle dump truck cost versus the single axle?
A tandem axle dump truck without the salt spreader and stuff like that, probably be about $110,000, $120,000, somewhere around there.
I'm just wondering in the future if that might be advantageous, you know, to fit into our fleet, you know, as a replacement, you know, potential if one truck was down or something, if we had another dual axle tandem as opposed to the single axle.
It can be used for some of those things. One of the purposes for this vehicle, though, is to pull our Dura-Patcher, and that has to be a single axle truck.
Comments or questions from commissioners?
Darren, what's your usage of the 87 Ford going to be after?
We will sell it on Purple Wave.
Okay. There's no other department?
I will ask around. I will put out an email, and then it will be part of our Purple Wave list this fall.
Does it have any life left to it?
You know, it, it would, honestly, you know, for, for people that, that need that sort of thing, that they only use a little bit of the time on an unregulated basis, you know, not needing to tag it or anything like that.
So, agricultural use or at a feedlot or something like that, but?
Yes.
As far as a commercial use, like we're trying to use it, I see that it's outlived its usefulness, so. Further questions or comments from commissioners?
Quick question is, do we need to modify this at all to, to pull a trailer or anything that you're going to be pulling?
No, it was back, it was back with a receiver hitch?
Okay. I just.
And, and tail plug-ins.
Okay. Thanks.
Are there any public comments? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the Commission for Action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we award the bid for one 2020 single axle dump truck with dump body by Hillbill to MHC Kenworth Salina in the amount of $78,100.
Second.
Been moved in second that we approve, RFA 119-20, bid award for a single axle dump truck. Further comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. The motion carries. We'll move to item number 12.
RFA number 114-20, bid award for pipe culvert and bridge decking. Justin Mater, County Engineer.
Good morning, Jason. Justin.
Good morning.
Jason left, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that he did. So, I'm here to, to discuss and take action on a Roden Bridge Department request to award bid for pipe culverts and galvanized bridge decking. Sealed bids were open on January 8th, 2020 here at the City-County Building at 11:00. Two bids were received. Well, that seems to be an issue. Oh, every time I move it, it's off. Okay. So, we received two bids. The one bid from Wellborn Sales Incorporated, and, and what we did is I combined all of the pipe culvert material, and so we're talking the, the pipe, the end sections, and the bands, and so those were awarded together, and then the galvanized bridge decking was, will be awarded separately. So, for Wellborn Sales, the, the pipe culvert material was bid at $86,014.25, and the galvanized bridge decking was bid at $9,980.80. J&amp;J Drainage bid the pipe culvert material for $92,151.77, and there was no bid for the galvanized bridge decking. I did supply in your packet a breakdown of, of all the pipes. It's, it's a busy sheet, and again, at the bottom in the blue color on those bid tabs is the totals for that. So, the two alternatives is to accept the bid as indicated in the staff recommendation or reject the bids. Staff recommends to accept the bid from Wellborn Sales in the amount of $86,014.25 for the pipe culverts, end sections, and dimple bands. And then staff recommends to accept the bid from Wellborn Sales in the amount of $9,980.80 for the galvanized bridge decking. The, as far as the budget impact, the, the pipe and end sections will be taken from an account line item for corrugated metal pipe. It says this account has a current balance of $50,000, and so the remaining balance of the pipe culvert's remaining balance at $86,014.25 will come out of our 125 account. And that's our, also referred to as our two mil account. And this account has a balance of $1,662,459.36, and the staff recommends to fund the, the galvanized bridge decking to be taken out of the 125 account as well.
So, in other words, the CMP is a corrugated metal pipe budget line item?
Correct, yes, yeah.
Of which has a, has a current balance of $50,000. Was that a total for the, allocated for the 2020 budget, or was that some carryover money too, or?
I'm assuming I, Darren's the?
That was allocated in the 2020 budget.
And so, and, and what happened is, all of these, all of this material is going to be placed just in our inventory to be used as needed, and with the pipes and the year that we had last year with all the flooding, all the issues, and, and the issues that exposed, you know, all the, the flooding, we replaced a lot of pipe last year, and so this is just to replace the, the large amount of pipe that we used last year, and so that's why it's, it's more than expected.
Well, and, and I like the fact of having some inventory, because you don't know when these, these situations are going to these situations are going to arise, and having that pipe on hand helped us get to those projects a lot quicker than if we had to go to the manufacturer.
Correct.
Or someone who may or may not have the inventory on hand, so. Okay, other comments or questions from Commissioners?
One question, Justin, you're looking to use up the whole $50,000, and is there enough flexibility in the 125 account which will allow you down the road if you have an emergency, that anything that would happen could come out of that account?
Yes, yes, it does, yeah.
Further comments? Questions from the public? Seeing none, I'll bring it back for action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we award the bid for pipe culvert and bridge decking to Wellborn Sales, Inc. as listed in RFA 114-20.
Second motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 114-20 Bid Award for Pipe Culvert and Bridge Decking to Wellborn Sales. All of those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries unanimously. Item 13.
RFA number 115-20 Bid Award for Waterwell Road Reconstruction. Justin Mater, County Engineer.
Morning again, Justin.
Hello. So, you know, I'm here to discuss and take action on the bid for the Waterwell Road Reconstruction Project, and that project is located between Burma Road and Lightville Road. Sealed bids were open on January 8, 2020 at 11:00. Two bids were received. The first bid from TNR Construction for $673,901.63. APAC Kansas came in with a bid of $679,717.47, and then the engineer's estimate on that was $672,711.35. You should have in your packet a breakdown of the bids that looks similar to this here. And this is the second time this project has been bid. The first time, the first bid was on July 1, 2019, where we only had one bidder, which was APAC Kansas, and they bid $736,745.10. The higher bid was mainly due to the weather and flooding, just the year that we had last year. Contractors statewide were behind schedule on all their projects and really just didn't have the time to fit any more projects, you know, to try to get done last year. So that bid was more than 10% over the engineer's estimate, and so we did not award it at that time, and this was the rebid of that. Alternatives for action is to accept the bid or reject the bid. Staff recommends to accept the bid from TNR Construction in the amount of $763,901.63. The funds to construct this project will be taken out of the 124 account, which is a special road construction fund, or also referred to as a one mil fund. This account has a current balance of $91,226.25.
Both of these firms actually are local. I mean, APAC has a plant here and TNR is from Salina also.
Yes, that's correct.
Is there a start date or potential start date, or is there a window on that, or how are we approaching that?
Yes, what I, how I put it is, they can start as soon as the contract's awarded, but there's temperature requirements, and there's temperature things where they can't start too early. But then in the contract, there's a completion of July 3 of 2020. And so, but also put in there with these contracts, though, is when they do start, they have 50 working days to get the job done, and it just needs to be done by July 3.
And this would close that road, I presume? I mean, there'd be road closure, there just wouldn't be a one-lane road or anything like that?
Correct, there's, it's going to be a road closure, but the entire mile's not going to be closed. You know, this is, we've had to establish a construction sequencing, you know, so that the people who live on Waterwell Roads, you know, still need access to their property, and they need to be able to get in and out. And so the project's going to be sequenced so that people can get in and out.
All right, I follow that. Sounds good to me. And again, this does include, are we surfacing that road?
Yes, yeah, this project, well, we're going to do some grading, you know, regrading the ditches, regrading the existing roadbed that's out there, place six inches of aggregate base down, and then four and a half inches of asphalt on top of that.
Okay, are there further questions or comments from Commissioners?
What sort of realignment of the road has to be taken?
The road's going to be, the center of the, our new, the proposed road is real close to the center line of the existing road.
Okay.
So on the north side, we did not obtain any additional right-of-way easements, you know, so the fence line that's out there now, I mean, that kind of defines the edge of construction, but that also kind of limits on what we can do on the north side of the road. On the south side, we obtained about another 20 feet of roadway easement, and, which lines up pretty close to where the power poles are at, and that'll allow us to do a little more grading to get better ditches.
With the city, you got that?
Yes, yes.
Well, I'm going to thank you for this. This project wouldn't happen without you because of that, and it just took some outside-the-thinking and working with the city, because previous staff members were not willing to do that, and that's why it sat on that back burner for 10 years, so. I applaud you and your staff for getting everything done. Thank you.
Monty beat me to the punch on that one, that's for sure, because, and I echo his comments, because that was, the way it was presented to us previously, we couldn't move without that agreement of repurchasing ground and additional right-of-way and so forth, so I'm happy as a Commissioner to be able to see this project finally get started, and hopefully it'll get handled quickly. Further comments from Commissioners? Public comment regarding this road?
Alan Lenholm, 3647 South Lightville Road. I want to thank you guys for taking this into consideration, and I asked the Commission to please vote for this. Boy, we've fought for this for 20 years now. So if in your mind, just vote for it, that's all I can ask you. Thank you.
Well, an additional delay, I mean, it was, it's a state statute that the engineers bid on these things, the bid has to come in at least, maximum is 10% over the engineer's bid, is that how that is worded?
Yes, yes.
So the original bid, and as he said last year, and all contractors were very busy, so that's what delayed one more year, so we've had every hiccup imaginable come along, but looks like perhaps, and I don't want to state it too quick because we haven't voted, but looks like this is going to come to fruition, so. One more chance for Commissioners, or not, I'll bring it back for action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we award the bid for Waterwell Road Reconstruction to TNR Construction in the amount of $673,901.63 as recommended by staff.
Second motion. It has been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 115-20 Bid Award for Waterwell Road Reconstruction to TNR Construction. Are there any further comments? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries unanimously. So, it won't be six months, but because of the weather right now, but it's going to be, you know, this, it looks like it's going to be in 2020.
Yes.
So, okay, we'll move to item number 14.
RFA number 116-20 Bid Award for Aggregate Material. Justin Mater, County Engineer.
Good morning again, Justin.
Hello. So I'm here now to talk about the 2020 roadway maintenance, the aggregate material. Sealed bids were open on January 8, 2020, 11:30 here at the City-County Building. Six companies or quarries bid the material. In your packet, you should have a sheet with all of the bid breakdown that looks similar to this. And all of these prices are FOB at their respective quarries and places of business. And so this is really bid with the hauling, and so this is the cost of material at the quarry, and then I'll discuss hauling here in a little bit. So the alternatives for action is to accept the bids as recommended by staff or to reject the bids. Staff at Road and Bridge must evaluate the combined cost of the aggregate and the haul in order to determine the lowest cost to Saline County. So you should have in your packet an 11-by-17, very busy sheet that looks similar to this, like this one here, and what we have done on that is we've combined all of the aggregate cost and the haul cost to try to determine the lowest cost to Saline County. And the cells highlighted in blue, the dark blue, are the lowest costs. And so from this combined aggregate and hauling spreadsheet, we determined that the SS5 Special from Ham Quarry at Woodbine, Kansas is the best cost for Saline County at $10.15. For the AB3 material, that would come from Midstates Materials in Big Springs, Kansas. And then the, from Johnson Sand here in Salina, that'd be the SS7 at $12.94, and the SS8 at $7.94. And so for the budget impact on that, it was going to be simplest to provide you another spreadsheet which looks similar to this, because we have three line items that's really combined to pay for this material. So, so taking the material quantity, you know, that we're estimating, which is 40,000 tons for the SS5 material, which is a crushed limestone, that 5,000 for the SS7, which is a sand, 5,000 for the SS8, which is another type of sand, and 12,000 tons of the AB3, we've got a combined cost of $612,400. We've got three line items for those really materials, it's the SS5, and then there's one for sand, and then one for AB3, so we've got a budget of $705,000. Is there any questions?
You're right, it's a busy sheet, I'm having trouble...
That it is.
...rounding everything up. Is there any one company that can provide every single one of these products?
No, it's, usually you've got a quarry that's crushing limestone, okay, and so then it's different gradations of the crushed limestone, and then there's a sand pit, and all they produce is sand.
Are we changing our specs this year? I know last year there was a huge concern about the dust that was created by the rock that, because I think we did go with a different rock last year, or am I correct in that?
We had, we did have some issues with Ham Quarries, you know, and this material coming out of Woodbine, you know, it started off at the beginning of the year, meeting the gradation requirements that we established for that, and then over time, the material just got dirtier and dirtier and dirtier, and it got, it got to a point where we're like, okay, this, something has to be done. We had meetings with Ham, Darren and I, and Ham's representatives, and we talked about the issues and what needs to be done. Ham Quarries did provide us an extra 2,000 tons of material at no cost to pay for, to help reimburse some of the dust in a sense that we purchased. And we felt that, excuse me, we felt that Ham did an adequate job of trying to make right with the material that we got. Since then, Ham has put in a quality control lab at that quarry to do a better job. And last year was a very unique year in that we were trying to get all the material we can get our hands on, you know, and we felt that we just didn't want to stop with all aggregate, you know, obtaining aggregate, because we needed as much aggregate as we can, you know, and so this year, you know, we're definitely going to keep an eye on the material. If we start seeing some issues, we could start calling Ham up right away, you know, but hopefully we won't, hopefully we won't have any issues.
As a Commissioner and someone who's looking after the county's interests, I feel that was a good resolution that we got all that free rock. To the guy who lives out there and put up with that dust for a period of time whenever he did, that doesn't satisfy him, I can tell you, so.
I understand.
We really need to keep a close eye on that this year to make sure that this situation doesn't arise again, because it, I mean, I get it, if you live in the country, you're going to have some wind, and you're going to have some dust and so forth, but...
This is a crushed limestone, you know, and this limestone will break down as people drive on it. You know, now it's, you know, if this rock is put down during, you know, it's really, this rock is laying on top of the road waiting for the moisture to come, you know, and so to work down in there. You know, so, but if it's dry, and we don't get any moisture, and that rock's sitting on top of that roadbed, it's going to break down, and it's going to be dusty, I mean, that's just kind of the nature of the beast.
And there are two separate, there's a aggregate purchase and a trucking purchase.
Correct, correct. And the haul's going to be on the next request for action.
Okay, so we haven't gotten to that point.
Correct.
So, okay, further questions or comments from Commissioners?
What was the price comparison to 2019?
I knew you were going to ask. And I'm going to give you the combined cost, because that's really what the cost is to us.
Right.
Okay, so...
As long as it's apples to apples, is all I'm asking.
Sure, sure. So this year, the combined cost for SS5 is $17.09. Last year, we purchased it for $16.75, you know, so about another 35 cents more. The AB3 this year will be obtaining that for $16.75. Last year, we purchased it for $16.95, you know, so it's a little bit cheaper this year. The SS7 last year was $12, or, sorry, this year is $12.94. Last year, it was $12.98, so pretty close to the same. The SS5 last year, or this year, for this bid here, was $7.94, and last year, we paid $8.45, so, you know, that was a pretty good drop in price for the SS8.
And what is the difference between the SS7 and the SS8?
The SS8 has, was it the SS8 has, is a little bit finer, where the SS7 has a bigger gravel on it, so, you know, and the sand that we have around here is usually pretty, that we get naturally, is pretty fine, and so that's why the SS7 is a lot more expensive, is because they just can't mine it, you know, and provide that material, they've got to sweeten it up with some bigger rock that they get somewhere else.
And just a quick, is it worth our, I mean, where we use it at, is it worth the investment to put that SS7 down for the cost compared to the SS8?
More of a question from Darren.
You know, it all depends on what the roadbed needs. You know, we go out and we evaluate it, and if it's just something to make a cover material and not provide any bearing at all, then we'll use the SS8, which is a finer concrete sand. But if it's something that we're going to do a shoulder pull, and we're going to provide some fines with it, so it'll get a chance to pack in, then we'll use the SS7.
Okay, thanks.
Further questions, comments, public comment? Bring it back to the Commission for Action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we award the bid for aggregate materials listed in RFA 116-20 and recommended by staff.
Second.
Been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 116-20 Bid Award for Aggregate Material. Further questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, the motion does carry. We'll move to item 15.
RFA number 117-20 Bid Award for Aggregate Hauling. Justin Mater, County Engineer.
Justin.
Okay, so this is the other half that I was talking about, we've got to combine the aggregate material with the haul. Sealed bids were open on January 8, 2020, 11:30 here at the City-County Building. Seven bids were received. You should have a bid tab of all the bids that looks similar to this here, of all the haul bids. Alternatives for action is to accept the bids as indicated in staff recommendation or we can reject the bids. As I mentioned, with the material, staff at Road and Bridge must evaluate the combined cost of the aggregate and haul in order to determine the lowest cost to Saline County. And so in this packet, I did include the exact same combined spreadsheet, you know, as I did in the material. And so from that spreadsheet, we recommend that the SS5 Special material coming out of Woodbine, Kansas be awarded to Gary Johnson Trucking for $6.94 a ton, and the AB3 material from Big Springs, Kansas... for $6.94 a ton, and the AB3 material from Big Springs, Kansas, uh, be awarded to Pearson Construction for $8.25 a ton. Uh, for the hauling, um, you should have the same, for the, the budget impact, should have the same budget comparison spreadsheet that looks like this here. And on the bottom of that, I've got the haul budget comparison. And so you look at the quantities of material that's going to be hauled, which is the 40,000 tons of the SS5 and 12,000 tons of the AB3, we've got a, a combined cost of $376,600. Uh, the 2020 budget for that is $370,000, and so we do have a shortfall there of $6,600. Um, but where it can be offset is if you look at the aggregate, um, prices up above, we've got, uh, $92,600 left over from the aggregate material that can help offset that cost.
Justin, I'm pretty good at, um, Kansas geography, but I don't know where Big Spring, Kansas is.
I had to look it up, too. It's a, it's a real, real small, um, town, but it's, it's in between La Compton and, um, Topeka, about halfway in between on the south side of the interstate. Not too far off the interstate.
That's going to be about a 120 mile haul, so...
Yes. And it's a very, very good price for that, that kind of haul. And it's a good material. It should be from a, a really good ledge of, of material there.
I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that, you know, I think it was last year that we had a hauling contractor who did not fulfill their contract.
It was at 2018 is, is when we had issues with that.
2018, okay. They did not fulfill their contract.
Correct.
Uh, got a better deal. I don't, I don't know what happened. But it, but at any rate, we ended up not having aggregate in our yard because the contractor chose not to fulfill his end of the bargain. I want to make sure that we've got legal contracts in place, that there is some sort of a penalty, uh, that if they don't fulfill their end of it, they don't provide, if we need 10 trucks a week, or whatever the number is, then they're supposed to supply that number of trucks.
Correct. And, and so last year, we, we, there was a lot of discussion about this, and we, we came up with a system to where in the specifications, um, we say that the one-third of the bid material needs to be hauled to the county by May 1st of 2020. This, the, the next one-third of material needs to be hauled by August 1st, and then the last one-third needs to be hauled by December 1st. And so what that does, though, is if a hauler, um, cannot meet one of those deadlines, you know, then it gives us, um, it, it doesn't really penalize them, but it gives us an option to say, all right, we're going to go either to another hauler to finish out hauling that one-third material, or to, to say, you're done, and we're going to haul it, you know, have it haul from another hauler, and, and then the, um, really the penalty is then we won't accept your bids anymore. We have that option to not accept your bids in, in future years.
But that doesn't do us any good in the middle of the year if he decides not to do it, and his price is $10 a ton for hauling, and all of a sudden, we have to go to someone else for $12 a ton. That doesn't, you know, we don't have that budget. It, it doesn't, that doesn't help us.
No, no, that's, that's correct.
I mean, there should be something of a legal document, or, I mean, I don't care if they put it in there, that there, there needs to be an escalator, uh, as an example, for a fuel surcharge. When I was in business, I mean, you know, and you took a contract from somebody, and all of a sudden, the fuel goes crazy. You've got to have some sort of a, of a, of an escalator there that protects that person. That way you can get your best bid. But I, I don't, I just want us protected. I want rock in the yard, and I want it at the price that we've, uh, agreed to pay, and not, not an increased price.
Yeah. Yeah, and, and we talked about this in, in 2019, early, you know, last year, when we were trying to figure out what to do. And, and some of that stuff was, was talked about. Uh, some of our concerns with, with that, though, is, you know, it's all about risk management. You know, it's, it's managing the risk for us as well as the risk for the bidders, you know, or whoever's awarded the project. You know, and we felt if we put something in there, like a, a penalty, um, to do, you know, to help, you know, to pay to offset those costs, um, then your bids are going to get quite a bit more expensive because now the bidders are taking on a lot more risk. Um, because like you says, there's, there's a lot of things outside of their control, too. And, and fuel can be one of them, and we talked about doing a, um, a, a fuel price index, you know, on that, and decided not to. So, uh, but that's definitely something we can consider in the future. We were hoping by having, you know, these deadlines in here, um, you know, that'll, that'll, hopefully we can get ahead of the problem.
Well, I, I see another issue that's a potential problem there. If the, if the trucker has trucks and the, the quarry doesn't have the rock...
And I did put in there, it's like, this is only if the quarry has the material, because yes, that's, that's the other issues of the quarry doesn't have the rock, and they don't have nothing to haul. So you can't, you can't penalize them for, for that. Um, you know, so it's, it's kind of a complicated issue.
Well, the way I see it is that, uh, if we have an issue with this, we're not going to go after the trucker. We're going to come talk to the engineering department. So, we'll, we'll trust your professional intake here, and then that you're, that you're the one that's, uh, putting your stamp of approval on this, and that's, that's the way I'll vote accordingly. So, any other questions or comments from commissioners?
So, in looking at this, all the SS, the sand, the SS7 and 8, that'll be hauled, will be picked up by our trucks?
Uh, yes, yes.
Okay, that's what I assumed, but I just wanted to check that. Okay. All right, thanks.
Any public comment? Then I'll bring it back to the, uh, commission for action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we award the bid for aggregate hauling as listed in RFA 117-20 and recommended by staff.
Second the motion. It's been moved in second that we approve RFA 117-20 bid award for aggregate hauling. Any further discussion? All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Motion carries. We will go to item number 16.
County engineer update, Justin Mater, County Engineer.
Good morning, Justin.
Good morning. I'm back. So here, we're going to get the projector going. I've got, um, several things I would like to, to put up on the, the screen there. I thought it would be easier, uh, to, to go over. So, uh, my, my first thing that I would like to, to talk about is the past year and how this past year has gone.
Philip, could you hit those lights over there, please?
What are we talking about? Okay, see if I can find the right map here. That is not it. Okay, so this is our contractual road and bridge map from 2019. So this is, this is all the projects that we, um, we contracted last year. And so you should have a copy of this, uh, with you. And so I'm going to go ahead and switch over to this map. Okay, so, so what I wanted to start off by talking about is the projects that we are, we have not completed yet from 2019 and earlier. Okay, so you should have the, the paper copy of the full map. And so this here just shows the ones that we have left to do. Um, I started off with the two projects from 2019, and these were a reinforced concrete box projects that were awarded to Reese Construction. Um, and it's Reese Road and Honig Road, and so it's that, I am shaky. That one, that one right there, and then this one here on, on, um, this road. So those two projects were, like I said, were, um, designed and bid out as reinforced concrete boxes. Reese has suggested or asked if he could propose a span-type structure to be, um, constructed instead of a box. Um, and the span-type structures that they're, uh, proposing is, I'm very familiar with, and I said, that's fine. And so I'm waiting on some details. I have given the approval for one project site. They've sent me structural drawings of those, and I have approved those. I'm waiting on the other site. It's a skewed structure, so it's a little more complex. Uh, waiting on for the details, uh, from that project and an official proposal from Reese. But it looks like that, um, if everything gets approved, they would like to build those projects in the spring of 2020. The, okay, so then now for the 2019 contractual projects. We are currently, uh, under construction on a 100-foot reinforced concrete haunt slab, uh, project on Waterwell Road. So that is located just west of, um, Niles Road. It is a, um, L&amp;M Contractors is the contractor who was awarded that project. Uh, like I says, it's a 100-foot reinforced concrete haunt slab. It's, it's, we just did the deck pour Wednesday, which is a pretty major part of that project. And so it's, it's moving along quite well. So as expected. And then we have six reinforced concrete box projects, uh, that was awarded to Reese Construction. And here, there are the little blue dots, um, that you have around, um, around the county on the map. So on Watkins Road is that project. The project is constructed. The road is open to traffic. However, there's some items that as soon as it warms up, they need to go back and finish in seeding. Uh, but for the most part, that project's done. They're currently working on Lightville, um, which is that site right there, and Armstrong, which is that site right there. Uh, those are currently under construction, um, right now. And then Cunningham, Simpson, and Rose Hill, uh, those will be started. Hopefully, um, Cunningham is going to be started. That might actually start this week. Um, and, uh, Reese had two crews working on these. I think we're going to lose one of the crews, and so it'll, it'll slow down a little bit as far as the, the construction on that. Uh, but it will be moving forward. The red lines we have on the map here is the crack seal. Pavement Pros is the contractor that was awarded those projects. And so he's going to come back in and finish. So we've got Niles Road, Farley Road, and then this road south of, um, Fallen, thank you, uh, Fallen, that they'll, he'll have to finish the, the crack sealing on that. And then the overlay, and, and same thing with the crack seal. The, just because of the year, all the rain that they had, you know, and all the state projects and other county projects and city projects, all the contractors had just kept getting pushed off further and further and further. And so part of that was, um, the overlay. And so we postponed this overlay on Old 40 from Simpson Road to Niles Road into this year. Um, you know, it, when we were done with, um, I think Country Club was the last road that we overlaid, you know, we were really starting to push temperature requirements on that. And we just, I was like, you know what? It's just best to stop. Um, let's put it off till next year, carry, carry that money over, just to make sure we, we get a good product, um, when we're done with that. So those are the projects that we have not, uh, completed yet. And so let me give you just a summary of, of the work that we did. Bridges, see if I can find the right one here. Here we go. Okay, so this is just the, the asphalt contractual projects. Um, the right button here. Okay, so this top one, here's all the projects that we're working on. So here you've got HMA hot mix, uh, asphalt overlay. Uh, the, the cost that we've paid out on that is $794,500, and that's been final payment to APAC. And then the next line item is the, um, hot mix asphalt overlay that we're carrying over, which is, um, Old 40. And I'm estimating that's going to be $475,000 there. We've got the Waterwell Road surfacing project that we did at Holmes and Simpson, those two half-mile sections. Uh, that final pay was $375,000. When we have the chip seal, and then the crack seal, and then the crack seal carryover estimated. So we've got a, a total, uh, cost of $2,620,853. And, and there's some estimated cost in there. And then down below is the budget line items that we've used to pay for these projects. So the first one being the contractual asphalt budget, and added 1.9 million. There's a line item for aggregate shouldering. What I've started doing last year is I added the shouldering to the, um, asphalt overlay contract. It used to be separate contracts, and that's why there's two separate line items, and I combined them all together just to keep it simple. Um, but we still have two separate line items, and so that's why there's just $300,000 from that. The, um, the next one was the 124 account, Special Road Construction, and that was to pay for the Waterwell Road, um, surfacing project. Um, and then there's $90,000 that we used for the, or from the, the haul route impact fee. Okay, and so we set that up. Um, our commissioners, you guys set that up with the city for the, um, the landfill out there. And since we chip sealed Burma Road from K140 South, we, we took the money from that funds to help offset the cost to do that. And then finally, the last two line items down through there, we did some work in our yard, some chip seal and overlay work that we took out of our capital improvement program. And so, uh, we had a, a total budget of, um, 200, or $2,751,000. And so budget-wise, we were, we come within, uh, under budget. The next one, and I'll, I'll try, you guys have been here a long time, so I'm going to try to keep this quick, is, is just the bridges. Um, the first one up here is all of the reinforced concrete boxes that we built. And so I've got a, the first line item there is, or the, that column right there is the bid price, what we paid out. And then, so this is everything that's remaining. Um, we have the reinforced concrete haunt slab project on Waterwell Road that L&amp;M is building. And then we have the two projects carried over from 2018. So as far as the, the remaining payments, um, you know, to those contractors, we have just a little short of $850,000, and those are coming out of the 125 account. And so we got $1,662,459 in that. So, but these are all the, the bridge projects that, that we completed. Should say completed, that are either completed or under construction. And it does include the one Don Meyer, um, RCB that we did as, as an emergency situation. So that was kind of the, the gist of what I had for 2019. Do you have any questions on 2019 projects?
Nope. I got one question, Justin.
Yes.
The, I think you mentioned the three box, uh, jobs that, that Reese is wanting to, uh, do a, a span-type construction. They, they bid one thing, and, and I don't know if a time has gotten away and prices have gotten away where they can't, uh, fulfill it at that price, so we're allowing maybe to, uh, change the, we get as good a struc- we get a structure that will work just as well, but they can do it for less money. My question, when we change the rules like that, should that not go back out for bid? Or is it beneficial for us not to do that?
To me, not if they, if we change the, if we allow them to do it for less, I, I would think absolutely that would be an issue. Uh, but since they're, they're doing it for this, the same price, and this is actually, um, this is a more expensive structure than actually what they bid. And, and so what, because what they bid was, they bid way too low. Um, and then this project, because what, what they're using, what they're proposing is a, a precast, a conventionally reinforced concrete precast beams. Okay, so they're, they're precast, they're, it's not a pre-stress, but it's just conventionally reinforced. And I've used several of these in McPherson County. Um, and so they're, they're wanting to change from a box where you use a lot of concrete to where they're, now they're driving pile and putting on a pile cap and then setting these beams on top of it. Um, I'm, there's, there's, I made sure there's details in there that's, um, because the devil's in the details in a lot of this stuff. You know, you're always looking for what's the weakest point of that structure. And I want to make sure, and, and these types of structures, it's the back wall. And so I made sure that the back wall that they, um, construct in there is going to be a heavy gauge, um, metal sheeting going in the back wall through there. So, but going back to your question, just because they didn't change the price, I don't think there's, there's an issue there with having to rebid it. Okay, moving on to 2020. So now you should have a map in front of you of our 2020 program. Let's see if I can pull that guy up here. Okay, so this is what we're looking at for our 2020 program. Um, well, I'll, I'll kind of keep it in the same, um, same listing as far as do our, our span bridges first. And that'll be, there's a, a, a structure on Minter Road right here, uh, which is on the maps, a kind of an orange, um, rectangle. And that's a 160-foot reinforced concrete haunt slab. Um, I'm currently working on that project. It's, it's a slow process, um, but it's, it's under design. I'll, how I envision that this project goes, I'm, I would like to get a bid this year, but not constructed. It'll probably be, uh, at the very, very earliest. It'll be a next winter construction or after, um, just how this, how this times out. Um, the, I've got five reinforced concrete bridge projects. And again, those are, um, the light blue circles on the map. So one on Niles Road, Cunningham- So one on Niles Road, Cunningham Road, Minter Road, Woodard, and Cloud Street. I do want to take this opportunity to talk to you about one issue and maybe just kind of get your input and consensus, and that is Niles Road, right up through here. So Niles Road is a paved road. And if you know the area, there's not much for a road system around that site. And so we've got an issue with, we've got to take that, the existing bridge out, and it's going to be, that road, you know, you can't get through there for three months. Okay, and so that's, that's going to be, that could cause a big issue. And so what I have... It's got to go back one of these directions here. Hey, Phil? Yeah, it's an aerial, and it might be, just be, might have to go to the right. Yeah, go into the fuller. Yeah, it's the Nile shoe fly folder there. And then open up the, yeah, that preliminary, open both of those up, but I want to see I go back to the aerial one. Okay, so it's kind of hard to see in here, but what I've, I'm showing you here, here's the project location. Okay, and what I have, and it's kind of a light blue line all the way through here and up to this, the town of Niles. The blue line is all paved road. Okay? And then the only other gravel road is if you go from Niles to the east and then zigzag back down all the way around through here. There is one residence right here in McPherson, I'm sorry, in Saline County, north of the bridge. And then there's a couple of residents in Ottawa County, because the county line is right through here. So...
I thought the county, I thought the county line you told me was just, just that first road north of that, of that, right there.
Of the project, yes. And that's, yeah, that's this road right here.
Okay, so that's a mile and a half north, then?
No, this is, one mile is from here to here.
Okay, that's just a section line, then?
Correct, yes, yes. So option number one is to construct a shoe fly detour. See if I can scroll down. See if I can grab that guy. Phil, can you scroll down to the next page on that PDF? That one right there. So a shoe fly detour is when you build a road around the project site, and that's what this red line is representing through here. I've done some preliminary modeling. And the additional cost to build that shoe fly, and that is just with a, an aggregate surfacing, you know, so you're on a blacktop, but the shoe fly is going to be aggregate, you're looking at $79,000 to build that road around the project. And a big part of that is because there's, you've got anywhere from four to five foot of fill that needs to be brought in. Okay, and so you can't, because that's all flat farm ground through there, you're hauling all that dirt in from a pretty good distance. And therefore, that dirt gets real expensive to move in. And then when the project's done, you've got to haul all that material out. And that's why this gets so expensive. So you're looking at, you know, anywhere from $75,000 to $80,000 to build a road around the project. Okay? Go back up where that, that initial, the original sheet was. Okay, so another option is to install a detour. But you're installing a detour, you know, you're picking them up here at Shipton and taking them several miles to the east and then zigzagging back up into Ottawa County and back up and around. So you're looking at, for this person right here to get on the other side of the bridge, you're looking at a 12-mile detour. And it's a, and when I'm saying a detour, I'm talking a signed detour. So in order to do that, that is going to cost us probably around $10,000. And why we're saying that is, most of that cost is we're estimating about $1,000 per mile to maintain those sections of gravel road that's getting increased traffic right now. The other option is just to close the road, you know, and, let's see here. I don't know if I'm... Nope, I missed. You want to help me out, Phil? Yes. Just that, that very first one, the one that says traffic. You can't, okay, you can't see it very good from here. But in a sense, it's, there's a, you just say road closed, two and a half mile, or a half a mile ahead, and then you, this is Shipton, and you just put barricades up, road closes through traffic, the next road right here, road closes through traffic, and then here's your project site. And then what I was thinking up here on Niles, I would probably put a sign up here on K-18 north of Niles. You know, that's just, it just says Niles closed, Niles closed ahead. And then a couple signs on the west side of the city of Niles, running through there that says, you know, Niles Road Closed, Use 280th Road, which is the road in Ottawa County. And they would still be taking this route around here. It's, none of them are good solutions. You know, and it's, it's the other roads that are around here, which I've got these lines, other lines through here, other roads, those are dirt roads. And they're not good dirt roads. You know, when it's dry, and I'm, dry, dry, you can go down them. But if there's a little bit of moisture, you're not getting down them at all.
Justin, what's the traffic count on that?
Between 300 and 350. You know, so, and I guess I'm bringing this up now is because it's, no matter what we do, there's, people are going to be upset. Now, most of the people who are going to be upset live in Ottawa County and the city of Niles. You know, but I wanted to make sure you guys have some information if people do call you, you know, about why, why we're doing what we're doing. My suggestion is to, my recommendation is just to close the road like I've shown here. Do not put in a signed detour route and just let people go wherever they can. You know, and if it's dry, they can drive around, you know, the mile around the project, you know, on that dirt, dirt road. But when it's wet, they've got to find other ways around.
What's the size on the proposed structure?
It is a three-barrel with each barrel being 12-foot wide and six-foot tall, which is a little bit bigger than what's there.
And the time again, timeframe?
So on this one here, what I'm thinking is, I wouldn't allow the contractor to start until after wheat harvest. You know, so I'd probably put an early start date of, you know, like August 1st, and then a completion date, you know, probably, you know, March sometime, you know. So I mean, I think it's ideal to get this done during the winter time. You know, and I can squeeze that down, you know, we're just trying to figure out a lot of the design details and not the specs, but I, you know, we don't want to have this paved road closed during wheat harvest.
And you had the road, just after we built that $80,000 road on the east side, and on the west side, is it, is it worse?
It's about the same, you know, and I just, I picked...
Was it pasture on the one side?
No, it's, it's flat, farm ground, both sides. Yes. Yeah, so I just picked a side, just to do some preliminary modeling, because I wanted to have a good idea of how much fill, because I knew that was going to be the expensive part of it. And I called TNR here in town just to have them help, you know, kind of give me a number of per cubic yards, a cost per cubic yard, what it would take to, to bring that material in.
Have you done an engineer's estimate of the cost of the, of the construction?
No, I have not. And so we're, myself and Travis in my office, we're working on all five bridge sites right now, so we're in that process.
I'll have to mull that one over for a while.
Sure, no, yeah, and that's, and that's, yeah, that's fine. And I can, sure, if you would like, I can email you, you know, the aerials, you know, everybody on the board, just so you have this information. I just think this is a good one, that it can get interesting during construction, you know, when the roads actually close. I just want to make sure you guys have all the information as possible to defend whatever we decide to do.
Well, preliminarily, there's not an issue with me. I mean, it's going to be, the road is going to be closed. It's going to be closed for 90 days or 120 days or whatever you said it was going to be closed.
Yeah, probably three months.
It's really going to affect one Saline County resident. We had that road closed earlier this year because of the washout. Now we've got another issue. We're going to avoid wheat harvest. Simplest thing is, as you described, is to put the signs up on K-18. And again, probably back down at, at the interstate, the Niles Road is closed, and we'll do the best we can to get it open as quickly as we can. And it's just one of those, that's going to be an inconvenience for a period of time. And to spend $80,000 to put a little shoe fly in there, that 350 car counted day on that shoe fly is probably going to ruin that thing in about a week.
Oh, yes, that's just a...
So I mean, that's, that's going to be, not a very good expenditure of our money, I don't think. So I think we need to communicate with the, perhaps with the city of Niles or even the Ottawa County, tell them what we're going to be doing, and they can do their best. We need to communicate with the resident that lives in that area. And we also, it would be nice if we could put up a sign that they do around the country once in a while, that it affect, coming, just say it's September 1st.
Oh, sure.
Or August 1st, as you said.
Yes.
You know, put the sign up in June. You know, August 1st, this road's going to be closed.
Right.
Alternate routes are going to be, should be considered.
Yeah, and we started doing that. It's a barricade, and we've got some special signs made that kind of informing people, like when we do Waterwell Road, we'll probably put those signs up, letting people know this is, this is when construction's going to start. And so when you see the construction signs, believe them.
Rather than, rather than they pull up to the road one day and there's a sign that says road closed, you know, give them, give them 60 days that we've, we put that road up there somewhere that this, this road is going to be closed for, you know, beginning August the 1st.
Correct.
Or whatever your date you choose.
Right.
So I think that's our best alternative and our, our most economical alternative and to get the project completed.
Okay.
If anybody wishes to oppose that, they're welcome to it.
So I'll just, if it's okay, I'll just, I'll get through the rest of my, our 2020 plan here real quick. And so then the next on the list is the crack seal. Again, it's, those are the red lines that we have on the map. The blue lines are what we have for our chip seal. And right now, for budgeting purposes, because our crack seal, chip seal, and our asphalt overlay is all in one line item, you know, I've got some estimated costs for each of those. And the chip seal's set up very similar to what we did last year. We're still using the crushed limestone that we used last year for that. And then for the asphalt overlay, we've got the last section of Old Forty from Niles to Solomon up here. And that will complete for the last three years, this whole road from the city limits of Salina to Solomon will receive an overlay. And so that's the last leg of that. The other one down here is on, there's a half mile of Centennial. And that project will be a joint project with the city of Salina, since the city limits kind of hits right there in the center of the road. And then what we have this year is be kind of, is very unique. I've got these black triangles scattered around the county. And these are locations where we have a low water crossing. And this is a low water crossing without a pipe underneath of it, but they're surface in asphalt, so it doesn't wash, constantly wash out. And it's just timed to where we do some maintenance, you know, on those low water crossings. And so that's what these little triangles are, as well as on this road right here, I think it's Mir and Forsey. We're going to construct some asphalt approaches onto the, onto the paved road. Because these two locations here, we've got some, especially at Forsey, it's in a curve where we had some motorcycle accidents where, you know, the gravel and aggregate's been drug on, you know, just from traffic onto the blacktop road and into a curve, and motorcycles, you know, hit that, that loose gravel. And we've had some accidents there. And so this is the, and Mir is just another location where we have a lot of gravel being drug out onto the pavement. And so we'll construct some asphalt intersections there. So I do have on this map, it's just, it's, you've awarded the bid, but I do have the Waterwell Road project on here, and that'll be for construction. And then I've got, now I might as well move on to our road improvement projects, which that's, that's the one of them, the Waterwell Road. But then we have, I've got two brown lines over here just north of the city of Gypsum. And these are for really flood mitigation projects, not through FEMA, but just through Saline County. The first one being Gypsum Valley Road. It's not quite a half a mile, but it goes from the dyke north to, there's a bridge in there, and it washes out pretty bad. And that's to upgrade that gravel road to an asphalt road, more for, because the water floods that road quite a bit and washes all the gravel and the road base and everything. This last year was a big mess. And then the other one was Kingman Road down here, just west of the River Bridge, and kind of going around the corner. That's another place where it floods real bad and washes out, washes out the road material.
East of the River Bridge.
West of the River Bridge. It's on the...
Oh, you're, okay, you're, okay, you completed a project that's on up the hill. The other one is right around the corner from there.
Correct.
Okay, I got you.
Yes, so. And then the, the projects, they're not on the map, but there are three projects that we've been kind of working on, and these are potential FEMA mitigation projects. And there's, there's three of them. And this is where the roadway is, and the, I'm going to say the right-of-way is being washed out from, due to the, the channel bank erosion. And then one of them is at the, pretty close in the intersection of Stemel and Jasper. The other one is on Cunningham, just south of Stemel. And then another one is on Gypsum Valley Road, north of Crawford. And so right now, I've got FEMA, the data they need to see if we can get those projects approved. And what we're thinking on those, instead of redoing the, doing a channel bank stabilization and stabilization project, is just moving the road further away from the, from the channel. You never know how long that's, that's, you know, it's, hopefully it's a long-term Band-Aid, you know, because eventually, depending on the flooding, you never know what it's going to be. There's a potential where still that erosion will still get back to the road. But that's what we're proposing right now. So with that, that's, that's about all I had. So is there any questions on our 2020 proposed projects?
None?
I got one question. I know I've brought this up before. It seems like the chip seal that we did in 2019 was different than the chip seals we've done in the past. I've noticed, I think Simpson and Burma were both chip sealed this past year. The gravel used on them is still coming up loose, still being picked up by tires and such. I would have thought it would have calmed down by now, and it has quite a bit, but...
Right. Burma is, I mean, kind of disappointed in certain sections of Burma Road where the, the aggregate's not... So what it is, you know, you, you apply a layer of oil, and then you drop aggregate on top of that. And the aggregate that we did last year, as well as for the 2018, which is prior to me, we used the same aggregate, and it was this crushed limestone from Woodbine. And it is, it still meets spec, but it's, it meets, the aggregate meets spec. Okay, and there's a hardness that the aggregate needs to be. And so, you know, of course, the softer it is, that aggregate starts breaking down. And keep in mind, that aggregate is not part of the seal, the oil's a seal. The aggregate is just a riding surface. Okay, and so what happens, there's a couple different things, like on Burma to where either the, the aggregate is, can be a little, a little too dirty, and it's not sticking to the oil. Or the aggregate is fracturing, and, and that's why you have the fractured aggregate rolling around on the road. There are options, and I'm, I'm kicking around a couple different options. I mean, number one, we can buy a very, very hard aggregate from Lincoln County. You know, we'll, and we can do that. You know, we'll, and we can do that, but we won't be able to do near the miles that we're doing now, because that's some very expensive aggregate, very, very expensive aggregate, because it's, it's good. It's really, really hard. There is some, a couple of different maintenance applications that I'm kicking around that I want to do some more research and call some other counties who have used this in the past, before I even want to bring it up to you guys to even recommend, because I don't want to recommend something to even bring up that's, that we're going to have issues with. And especially during the winter months, you're always going to have aggregate that gets fractured just during the snowplow operations. You know, and so it's, it, it has some issues. And so, yeah, this last year, we've got some roads that I thought it, the chip seal is performing well. The aggregate's staying where it's supposed to be, and it's not fracturing, and there's places to where it's not performing well at all. So, but these miles are based off of using the same material that we used last year.
Okay. I'm going to call for a short recess due to the length of our meeting. We've still got some things to go here, so we'll reconvene in here in about, what, seven minutes, good? 11 o'clock?
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the commission, County Administrator Philip Smith Haynes. Just have a very brief update this morning. Just wanted to note a couple of upcoming events. This afternoon, staff will be meeting with our architect on the potential jail project from Trainer and Associates, and we're actually going to be doing a walkthrough of the facility where we'll be holding our next town hall. So as a reminder to commissioners and members of the public, our next town hall on the jail project will be on January 30th, that's a Thursday evening at 7:00 PM, at the Stevens Center on the campus of St. John's slash St. Francis at 110 West Otis here in town. Tomorrow, staff will be accompanying the chair to Local Government Day in Topeka. It's a reminder that the state legislature is back in session, so we'll be following legislative matters as we see what they have in store for counties this year. And next Tuesday, we will be doing our next Dutch Breakfast. That's all I had for today.
Questions or comments from commissioners? Are there any commissioner comments? No? We'll move on to other business. I assume no one has any announcements. I will announce that I attended the Saline County Soil Conservation Dinner last Thursday night. It was also attended by Administrator Philip Smith Haynes. I also attended the Gypsum City Rule, or Number One, Fire, Rural Fire District Number One Appreciation Dinner and their meeting to follow, which was held at Gypsum this last Saturday night. So that was quite interesting also. So are there any other announcements or from commissioners, any, anything to come out of your building authority meeting this morning? Does anybody want to comment? Okay, I guess I will take a motion for adjournment then.
So moved.
Second.
So moved and second, then we adjourned the meeting. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.